(Musik) 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 (Musik)
Board Member Robert E. Sow, District 1 is now recognized to act as floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I request my fellow board members to raise your right hand and let us recite the PBML Creed in unison? Board Member, given the mandate to serve my constituency to responsible, responsive and effective legislation, provide dynamic leadership, promote and maximize the delivery of basic services for the general welfare under a regime of a truly consultative and participative democracy, I impose upon myself the supreme obligation to perform and carry out the functions prescribed by law unselfishly and with most dedication thereby becoming a genuine catalyst of change in my locality and in our nation.
Thank you. Please be seated. May I request our Sangguniang Panlalawigan Secretary, Mr. Dennis Castillo, to call the roll in order to determine the existence of quorum as required by law.
The regular presiding officer of the 10th Regular Session of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan of the Province of Davao del Norte for term 2022 to 2025, the Honorable Vice Governor De Carlo Lim Uy is present. Board Member Shirley Belen Araala, Board Member Janet Tanong Mabolok, Board Member Denise Marian Ailu, Senior Board Member Flofon Royal A. Katalan, Board Member Francisco C. Rimitar, Board Member Dindo C. Parangan, Board Member Manuel G. Pamisaran, Board Member Orly A. Amit, Board Member Emerson Dave A. Silutan, Honorable Floor Leader Robert Elso, Board Member Nikandro T. Swae Bagio Jr. and Board Member Prospero I. Estabilio Jr. are on sick leave. Board Member Divona H. Humamil and Board Member Ariel S. Bakla are on official business. Ten honorable members or eleven honorable members, including the regular presiding officer, are present, Mr. President.
Since we have constituted a quorum, the 10th Regular Session for calendar year 2022, Term of Office 2022 to 2025 is hereby declared in order.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, the reading and approval of the minutes and journal of the 9th Regular Session held on August 30, 2022.
Floor Leader, please.
Mr. President, considering that the copies of the minutes of the 9th Regular Session held on August 30, 2022, consisting of 62 pages, were already uploaded to the respective devices of this August body, I therefore move to dispense with the reading of the said minutes.
Any second please. Honorable Parangan, Tanong Mabolok, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none. Motion presented by the floor leader is hereby approved.
Mr. President, I further move for the approval of the minutes of the 9th Regular Session held on August 30, 2022, consisting of 62 pages. I so move.
Any second please. Honorable Pamisaran, Araala, Parangan, remarks, observation, amendments or corrections, objections, hearing none. Motion presented by the floor leader is hereby approved.
Likewise, Mr. President, considering that the copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the 9th Regular Session held on August 30, 2022, consisting of 126 pages, were already uploaded to the respective devices of this August body, I therefore move to dispense with the reading of the said Journal of Proceedings.
Any second please. Honorable Araala, Parangan, remarks, observation, objections, hearing none. Motion presented by the floor leader is hereby approved.
Mr. President, I further move for the approval of the Journal of Proceedings of the 9th Regular Session held on August 30, 2022, consisting of 126 pages. I so move.
Second please. Honorable Araala, Parangan, remarks, observation, amendments, corrections, hearing none. Motion presented by the floor leader is hereby approved.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, privilege our...
Floor Leader, please.
Mr. President, nobody has signified their intention to deliver a privilege peace, so let's proceed.
Let's proceed, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, question our...
Floor Leader, please.
Mr. President, the Secretary to the Sangguniang Panlalawigan has invited Engineer Josi Jean Rabanos, our provincial administrator, to attend today's session to discuss the request granting an omnibus authority to the Honorable Governor to make enter to make enter into and sign instruments relative to the grant of financial assistance to local government units which schools implementing special education program. And in behalf of provincial governor of Davao del Norte, moreover, she is also invited to appraise this August body regarding the declaration of savings of the following items certified by the provincial budget officer, provincial accountant and provincial treasurer, and same shall accrue to the government equity available for operation of the general fund and be made available as a source of fund of supplemental budget calendar year number, uh, budget number three, calendar year 2022. First item, we have savings from the PS accounts with amount of 39,019,600. Number two, savings from PS account with the amount of 382,501. Third item, also, uh, savings from PS accounts, 2.6. Fourth item, savings from PS account. Fifth item, savings from PS account. Sixth item, savings from PPE accounts. Seventh item, savings from MOE accounts. Eighth, savings from MOE accounts. Ninth, also savings from MOE account. Uh, up to 14 item, all our savings account, Mr. President, with a total amount of 25,466,970. And then today, she is also invited to shed light on the authorization of the proposed calendar year 2022, General Fund Supplemental Budget Number Three, uh, involving the total amount of 109,821,583 and 73,000 tabos, Mr. President.
Any second please. There's a move. There's a motion. Second, Honorable Parangan. Second, that by Honorable Parangan, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none. Motion presented is hereby approved. May the Chair get the two-thirds votes for the suspension of the rules.
Mr. President, for two-thirds votes, Honorable Araala, Honorable Mabolok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimous, Mr. President.
Uh, rules are now suspended. Floor Leader, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have with us today, Mr. President, Engineer Josi Jean Rabanos, our provincial administrator, Ms. Emilia C. Palero, our provincial budget officer, Dr. D. Silva, our school division superintendent, Ms. Marlene A. Publico, our DEPED, Davao del Norte Division, Mr. Nelson E. Plata, provincial planning, Ms. Evelyn G. Espera, our provincial treasurer, and Ms. Winona J. Avinido, our provincial accountant. Uh, but first, may we call on...
Uh, yes, um, is there anybody who would like to interpolate?
May we recognize first our provincial administrator, Mr. President, Madam Jean Rabanos.
Yes.
Good morning, Ma'am Jean. Thank you for coming and, uh, the floor is now for you to open with regards to the memorandum of agreement.
Okay, to the Honorable Presiding Officer and to the honorable members of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, good morning. So this representation is invited in relation to the request of the Honorable Governor for an omnibus authority given to him to enter into and sign instruments relative to the grant of financial assistance to LGUs with schools implementing SPED program for and in behalf of the provincial government of Davao del Norte. A said amount is to be taken from this special education fund and approved by the local school board. With this, we have invited our DEPED Division Superintendent, Dr. D. Silva, and Ma'am Marlene Publico, the education program supervisor, for them to present to us the details of this MOA and that of the content of the SPED requirement under the SEF. Uh, if before we give authority for the, our program, education program supervisor, Ma'am Marlene Publico, to do the presentation, please.
My due respect to our Vice Governor, uh, Vice Oyu Boy, and then to the Sangguniang Panlalawigan members in attendance, to our school's division superintendent, Dr. D. Silva, to the section heads in attendance, a pleasant morning greetings to everyone. This morning, I would like to present to you the special education program of the Division of Davao del Norte. We would like to inform you of where we are now, what we are doing in the Division of Davao del Norte. To start with, I'd like to present to you the rationale of the, of the special education program that is pursuant to DEPED Order Number 26 Series. And then, uh, I would like to inform you that the Division of Davao del Norte is now uh, offering different learners with disabilities like hearing impairment, visually impaired learners. We have children with autism, we have hearing impairment, we have, uh, children with autism, uh, hearing impairment and others, uh, disabilities. And as you can see, we have also, uh, recognized SPED centers in the Division of Davao del Norte. We have four, namely, the Carmen Central Elementary School SPED Center, we have Maniki Central Elementary School, we have New Curilla Sen- Elementary School, Santutomas Central SPED Center, and for the secondary level, we have Asunshon National High School, Santutomas SPED Center and Carmen Central Element- and Carmen National Sen- National, uh, Carmen National School. And we have also lists of implementing schools. This is for elementary level. We have, uh, inasmuch as the Division of Davao del Norte is composed of 11 districts, so every district's, uh, has an implementing schools. We have from Asunshon, we have Cambanugoy, Kamuning Magatus, Ang Sagain. For Carmen, we have Carmen, Magcai Cai and Pinta Sabarat. For BI Duhali, we have BI Duhali Central. For Langilan District, we have Langilan IS, Gupitan, Dugayan IS, Apertegasan IS, Talwininan, Kamunuan. For Kapalong East, we have Maniki Central, Adilanto, Cal- Clementa, Mabuhay, Mabantao, Marcos Istoque, Pandulian. For Kapalong West, we have Gabuyan, Te Vorsya Luna Elementary School. And for New Curilla, we have New Curilla Central, Mesa Uy, New Cortes, Mam Bing, Santuninyo. For San Isidro District, we have Sawata Ernan Core, San Miguel PS, Pinamuno, Muti Duhali, Igango. For Santutomas East, we have Kimamon Elementary School, Salbasyon. And for Santutomas West, Santutomas Central, Balagunan, San Jose Tulalian. And for Talainguad, we have Santuninyo Elementary School. Our enrollment, as you can see, uh, we have a significant increase in our, in our enrollment. For Asunshon, we have a total of 165, as you can see in the, uh, in the slide. For BI Duhali, we have 37 enrollees. For Carmen, we have 75. Kapalong East, we have 421. For Kapalong West, we have 101. Langilan, we have 27. New Curilla, we have 172. For San Isidro, we have 194. Santutomas East, we have 79. Santutomas West, we have 138. And Talainguad, we have 23, a total of 1,432. For secondary level, for Asunshon, we have 134 enrollees. BI Duhali, we have 16. Carmen, 40. Kapalong East, 85. Kapalong West, 14. For Langilan, we have 30. New Curilla, we have 29. San Isidro, we have 35. Santutomas West, we have 314. Santutomas East, we have 13, a total of 710. Now, enrollment of learners with special needs per disability. For children with autism, we have a total of 128. Hearing impaired learners, we have 91. Visually impaired, we have 38. Intellectual disability, disabled learners, we have 520. For learners with disability, we have 587. For mental health learners, we have 41. For CP, we have 25 learners. For Down Syndrome, we have 70 learners. For orthopedically handicapped children, we have 20. And ESD, we have 19, a total of 1,539. With this report that I have, the, the SEF fund that we are asking, we would like to request that this will be utilized for the special children they need for assessment, assistive devices, trainings for the parents and other materials that we can utilize that will be used for our special children in the Division of Davao del Norte. And for that, uh, we have 36 identified schools that will be recipient in the SEF funds that will be given to us, hopefully. And we have Cambanugoy Central for Elementary, Sawata Ernan School, Elementary, San Jose, Kamuning Carmen, Magatus, Santuninyo, Maniki, Magcai Cai Elementary School, we have Pinta Sabarat, Luna, Mabuhay, Mesa Uy, Te Vorsya Kimamon, Balagunan, Tulalian, New Curilla, Langilan, Gabuyan, BI Duhali, San Miguel, Ang Sagain, Mesa Uy, Mabantao and Pinamuno for Elementary. And for secondary, we have Santutomas National High School, Linao, Asunshon National High School, New Curilla, Kapalong, Luna, Kimamon National High School, Duhali National High School, Carmen, Antonio Froto Senior National High School. These are the 36 recipients of that SEF that, uh, hopefully will be given to us. And, uh, uh, we are hoping that this will be, uh, given to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, ma'am. Um, is there anybody who would like to interpolate, Floor Leader?
Mr. President, please recognize Board Member Pamisaran.
Yes, Honorable Pamisaran is recognized. Uh, a question lang, Ma'am Marlene, oh?
Yes po.
Marlene, um, for the 50,000 assistance, correct me if I'm wrong, is it per school? Per school po ba? Or no?
Uh, we have, that 36, uh, recipients that I am, I am mentioning to you are the only recipients that we identified because they have lots of enrollees, so...
Hmm, so sa 36 schools, mo'to amakadawat of tag 50,000?
Yes po.
What would cover the 50,000?
Uh, that is for the assessment of the learners because we have lots of learners which are not assessed and then the assistive device, uh, for them to utilize during their classes.
Ah, okay. So those should be the breakdown?
Yes po.
Uh-oh. So assessment as well as assistive device?
Yes po.
How about, um, additional school fees? Do they have additional school fees?
No. Wala na. Wala na po.
So basically, katong 1,000, um, 700 ba'to? How many, how many children totalan?
1,000. For elementary, one, we, for elementary, we have 1,432. And for secondary, we have 710.
So basically, katong silatanan is libre na?
Actually, sir, they are all libre.
Mora libre na gyan.
Oo. That is why, uh, the schools, the implementing schools, uh, really lack some materials for them to be utilized.
Hmm, so basically, kani 50,000, this would be the additional...
Yes.
Uh, mga panginahang lanu nila sa ilahang pagiskwela.
Yes po.
Yes, okay. Um, thank you. Honorable Pamisaran?
Actually, my, uh, inku rin, Mr. Chair, is the same with you, but I would like to be clarified, Mr. Chair, no? Uh, it was mentioned a while ago during the presentation that there are 36 schools who will be the recipient for the program for special children with special educational needs. And, uh, it was mentioned a while ago that the, the said amount will be equally distributed to those 36 schools in the amount of 50,000.
Yes po.
May I know, how would you arrive with the said, uh, idea to distribute the said amount equally, considering that, uh, they will vary in the numbers of enrollees and numbers of recipient?
Yeah.
How would you come up with the idea to distribute the same amount equally, 50,000 pesos? Where in fact that the recipient, they will vary in the numbers of the recipient and enrollees, Mr. Chair?
We base on the number of learners and we base also on the number of, uh, disability that are in, in school. Uh, and that depends on the severity of the disability of the children. And, uh, we base also on the programs, activities that are, uh, that are conducted in the school.
So, may I continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Yes, uh, I understand, but of course, uh, they are not the same in needs and, uh, numbers of the, the recipient, uh, ma'am, no? Uh, so, did you come up with the, a study with that, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
And of course, uh, maybe, shall we say, did you done in, in averaging to come up with the figure that, uh, may be equally distributed, ma'am? Did you, did you conduct a study for that, ma'am?
Can ma'am answer? Can, ma'am B?
May I hear the, the explanation from my good friend? Actually, ma'am, uh, Silva D., uh, served also in the city of Panabo as the school's division superintendent during my time when I was the Sangguniang Panlunsod Chairperson on the Committee on Education.
Uh, good morning, everyone, especially to our Presiding Officer.
Good morning.
Uh, this 50,000 is based on the proposals submitted by the schools. The schools submitted their proposals based on their needs, based on the severity of the, uh, disability of each child. So although the numbers vary, but we have many things to, to take into consideration. So we depend on the proposals submitted by each school.
Thank you for that information, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pamisaran. Um, ma'am Silva, um, siguro ang gusto lang yud maklaro on behalf of the council, the, the provincial board members. Same lang yapon sa kuang pangutana, ganiha na. Um, with this amount, would it cover na more or less libre na or close to wala na expenses kani mga bataa pag once na mahataga na ni?
Uh, actually, we, we do not collect from these children.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I mean, mas maging hamugaway ang ilahang pagiskwela. Oo. Ang pagtuldlopod sa ilaha with this assistance.
Ang pinakaimportante dito, 'yung assessment po.
Yes po.
We need to assess the, the children before we can give interventions.
Yes. I was also brief on that during one of our previous discussions, that, um, assessment is, um, needed to know kung unsagid ang panginahang lanu na na, na bata. Floor Leader, please recognize, um, Honorable Araala first, then Honorable Amit.
Please recognize Board Member Araala, Mr. Palero.
Honorable Araala, is recognized.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. This is indeed a very valuable and compassionate program. How are the teachers trained? Or how do they conduct the education of these students who are classified in those things? Honestly, I have been a teacher pero sa honor, binamix, malang na, mura fruit salad, ramang mga bata dito. Unyao sa akin, nabully pag yud na sila. So, I really appreciate this program and I would like to know more, being a teacher.
Yeah. Uh, most of our teachers are, uh, scholars of the special education program and some of them, those are receiving teachers who are not, uh, scholars. They were sent for a training. Every now and then, we have a training conducted in our division and even in the schools.
So madam, maski dalawa lang ang turuan nila, okay lang sa mga teachers?
Okay lang po because, uh, ang hinahanap po namin for teachers who will handle Elsen's are those teachers who has love for our children and who has, uh, compassionate.
'Yung magaling talaga na hahawak na hindi aawayan, hindi kukurutin 'yung mga bata. Kailangan talaga 'yung may love sa paghawak ng mga special children.
Do you notice any bullying in the area of these school children? Wala, madam, wala?
Wala naman po kasi, part of our advocacy, every year, we have, uh, this, uh, NPPR celebration wherein, we always inform the school, the community, that we have this program, the special education program, that, uh, those children should be treated equally as the regular students. That is why no bullying in every schools and every community that they were assigned.
Uh, I would like to congratulate the provincial government and also our legislative work in compassionately supporting this program.
Thank you po.
Naghangkaing salamat, madam, sa inyong sacrifices. I will be part of that sacrifice.
Mr. President. Honorable Araala.
Please recognize Board Member Amit.
Honorable Amit is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, thank you to our visitors. My question is addressed to Dr. D. Silva, our school's division superintendent. Uh, good morning, ma'am.
Morning.
Thank you for your service to our education sector. Rest assured that, uh, this kind of proposal is very much closer to the heart of...
Fund. That's one example, ma'am.
Thank you, Honorable Pamisaran. Last.
Board Member. Katalan, Mr. President, please recognize.
Yes, Honorable Katalan, Mr. Pagnay.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, thank you, Mr. President. Just one question, Mr. President. This, since this is a concern about our children's, children with special needs, no? Learners, sorry, learners with special needs. During one of the forum I attended together with our good Vice Governor, it was raised that one of the challenge, no? Challenges in dealing with this matter are the assess, the assessment of our, of our learners. Considering that in Davao region or in, I believe, Davao City, there are only three or two doctors who are allowed, or was the capacity, shall I say, to assess our learners with special needs. Assessment is vital as what transpired during the forum, so that we can evaluate what are the needs, what are the specific approach that the facilitator will address, in, in addressing, no? Addressing the, the student. Considering that is a factor, ma'am. And I am also alarmed that sometimes it would took two years, one year or three years before a student can be assessed. So, given that kind of challenge, ma'am. And since we are dealing here with learners with special needs, we are, we will be providing funds with learners with special needs. We are saying that we are giving these funds based on the needs of the students. How do we base, how do we assess? How do we able to gauge the needs of the students? Where in these students, where if I were to believe, were not yet assessed by the, ah, um, experts, shall I say? So, can you please elaborate further? How was this fund? Ah, was, how was, how, how did we arrive with this fund? Wherein, if you would agree with me that these students were not yet assessed by experts? And in second, since majority of our students were not yet assessed, how will DepEd will manage to approach these students? Thank you.
Thank you, BM. Actually, sir, kahit hindi pa na-assess itong mga batang ito, meron silang mga manifestations. And although there are only three doctors to assess the children, however, there are cases or there are disabilities that can be assessed by other experts. Because we have lots of disabilities. So, iba 'yung para sa hiring impaired, iba 'yung mag-assess para sa visually impaired. So, we can go to, to other, to other institutions, so that we will know the different, the severity or the different disabilities of the children. At kahit hindi pa sila na-assess, meron na manifestations. And ang ating mga parents na din at saka ang ating mga teachers, they are already trained, no? They are already trained to detect, to detect some signs. So, mona na, that's why we are requiring or we are recommending for these children to be professionally assessed. Because the teachers and the parents have already seen manifestations of their different needs and disabilities.
So, you're saying, ma'am, that there is only an initial assessment made by non-professional, non-experts?
By the teachers.
By the teachers who, who are not trained or not professional?
They are trained, they are trained.
They are trained. Are they physicians? Are they doctors?
No, but they are teachers, but they are, they are trained. We have scholars for SPED. And they are trained. Every year, we have trainings for receiving SPED teachers.
Yeah, I, I totally understand the comment of the DepEd, Mr. President. I am stressing this out so that in order to help DepEd. Because there is a, a clear, um, challenge on that. So, I believe the, the good Vice Governor also understands this, this issue because she is the one who calls for that forum. Maybe that's something that we can look into, the provincial government can look into as to how are we going to facilitate the assessment by professionals, licensed professionals to our students? That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Honorable Katalan.
From the chair, Mr. President.
Yes.
Ah, may we know the reason why the 50,000 will be downloaded to the local government unit instead would not be directly downloaded to the schools concerned?
Our provincial administrator or accountant, no? Provincial accountant?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Honorable Presiding Officer and the members of the Sanguniang Pandalawigan. Regarding the query on why we will download the funds to the LGUs. It's because first, it is a fund from the Special Education Fund, which is 1% of the real property tax collected by the LGUs. And also, part of that, the province has a share of the collection. Now, if we directly deposit the amount or download it to the DepEd, the fund, I think, will be processed through the National DepEd Office because it will be deposited in their bank account. So, it will take a long time for them to again download the fund to the schools. So, in this manner, it will delay the implementation of the program. So, it's now the, between the LGU and the province. So, since there are COA circulars, for example, the COA Circular 2012-001, that if we download funds to the implementing agency, it should be backed up by a memorandum of agreement. The reason for that is we have to ensure that the downloaded funds, although it's, um, a small amount, 50,000, will be used for the specific purpose that we earmark for the fund. For example, like this one for educational materials, facilities and equipment and pupils' assess, assessment. Now, for the LGUs, they are also required to liquidate the downloaded funds to us so that we are assured that the money we transferred is used properly. So, that's why for easy facilitation and implementation of the program, it's best that we download it to the LGUs, Mr. Chairman.
Floor Leader.
Please recognize Board Member Amit, Mr. President.
Honorable Amit.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. My question again is addressed to Ma'am Selva. Follow-up question for that. The, the process of downloading funds from LGU to LGU and from LGU to national is, I believe, quite the same. But the concern that was raised by the good accountant is valid because it will be downloaded to the national government. My question is, meron bang resibo ang SDS office? Do you have your own official receipts?
We have, we have official receipts in our. However, if we give receipts to the funds given to us, it will go directly to the Bureau of Treasury and then matagal pa bago ma-makuha uli. It will pass through the Bureau of Treasury, then we will request from the DBM for the, the cash allotment.
So, ano ba requirement pag i-download natin sa LGU? Mag-request ba tayo ng resibo, Mr. President? Mag-issue ba sila ng receipt?
Our provincial accountant?
Yes, sir, they will be required to issue a receipt to, ah, because there's also a rule, Mr. President, that all the funds received by the LGU should be properly receipted. So, the LGU is required to issue a receipt to support the transfer of fund. And also, Mr. Chairman, I think the LGU will treat it as trust fund for the specific purpose intended.
And it is the LGU who will liquidate, not the DepEd?
Yes, sir, the LGU will liquidate. But I think in the purchase or disbursement, the DepEd will be the one to identify what disbursements or what procurement they will have.
So, again, the LGU will wait for the liquidation from DepEd before they can liquidate that to the province?
No, no, sir, the LGU will process the procurement. But in coordination with the DepEd on the needed supplies, materials and assessment fees that will be paid.
So, it is the LGU?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Floor Leader.
From the floor, Mr. President.
Yes.
Ah, the money or the funds is, will be taken from the Special Education Fund of the province. Now, is there any available funds? Do you still have the 1.3 something?
Ah, yes, sir, it's part of the annual budget of the local school board. Yes, sir.
Now, may we know if there is a authorization or a resolution coming from the Special Education Board?
I think there's an annual budget, sir, covered by the resolution of the local school board. Part of the annual budget.
Part sa annual budget?
Of the local school board, sir.
Ah, bang?
Because every year, the local school board will also identify programs, projects and expenses.
Na-ano 'yung nakabotang sa?
Yes, sir, there's an annual budget covered by a resolution from the local school.
Local school board, no?
And this amount, sir, is part of the annual budget.
So, existing relation, ah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the floor would like to ask queries from our guests?
Last query, Floor Leader. So, in connection with that, the question of the Floor Leader, since this would start now, this year, um, is it safe to say from maybe if the provincial administrator will answer that this will be a yearly budget that would be allocated to the special, from the Special Education Fund to our SPED centers?
Yes, Your Honor, actually, it started last 2018 pa. Yearly, there is a budget for this.
Okay, because we would be, I am finalizing crafting the ordinance in relation to this, maybe we could also include this to further institutionalize the said budget support to our SPED centers? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, if there are none from the members, maybe we could dismiss na our DepEd visitors? One minute recess, please.
I just would like to say thank you very much for supporting the different programs, projects of DepEd.
For Davao del Norte Emergency, dial 911.
Unia, na dudko sa Davnor Pasalubong Shop, ang pinakasikat na shop sa Davao del Norte. Mabisita ra?
Happy summer and welcome to Davnor Pasalubong Shop. Please come in.
Davnor afternoon. Unsa kini akong nadungan nga sikat og trending ang mga produkto sa Davao del Norte. Nahibong dudko.
Ang atong Davnor Pasalubong Shop, mo ang one-stop shop para sa mga produkto nga binuhat sa atong local entrepreneurs din ni sa probinsya. Local delicacies sama sa durian parts, barkilios, peanut butter, cacao products, chicharon, ug ang sikat nga banana chips.
Unia, naaba mo 'yung mga world-class na mga handicrafts na pwede ako ipadala abroad?
Yes, ma'am. Local handicrafts sama sa bags, T-shirts, wall decorations nga export quality og gisuportaan sa Department of Trade and Industry.
Amazing!
Unia, ma'am, unsa maningong napilian?
Pagitunan ako ni Patan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, anybody from the honorable members would like to ask with regards to the supplemental budgets? Please recognize our provincial administrator, Mr. President, Ma'am Jean Rabanos.
Our provincial administrator, Ma'am Jean Rabanos. Would you like to give a brief summary?
Well, thank you, your Honorable Presiding Officer. So, once again, to the Honorable Presiding Officer and to the honorable members of the Sanguniang Mayung Buntag sa Tanan. So, again, this representation is invited to discuss on the proposed CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number Three involving the total amount of 109,821,583 pesos and 73 centavos. So, I think in front, we have there the breakdown. So, first, there are two items that we would like to request. First is on the declaration of savings of the following items as mentioned by our Majority Floor Leader. So, there are 14 items, savings from the different accounts, giving us a total of 76,321,583 and 73 centavos. So, that's one of the sources for our supplemental budget number three. Then, the second request is on the authorization of the proposed CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number Three involving the total amount of 109,821,583 pesos and 73 centavos. So, we have there this summary. The next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, so that's it. So, we have there the fund source from the government equity available for operation in the amount of 108,321,583 and 73 centavos. And from the borrowings, Land Bank of the Philippines, in the amount of 1.5 million. These borrowings are just the change of nomenclature or changes in the description of the project as reflected in the proposed projects under our loan from the Land Bank of the Philippines. So, giving us a total of the 109,821,583 and 73 centavos. So, the supplemental budget is subject to the submission of the different requests from the different offices. Actually, originally, the requests submitted to the office of the budget, to the provincial budget office amounted to 109, ah, 150... 156,523,880 and 26 centavos. But since our available funds is only 109 million, there's a need for us to cut 46,702,296 and 53 centavos. So, after the deliberation of the local finance committee, we have here the following breakdown of the said supplemental budget. As a brief background, the priorities are those for the utilities and that for the other payables. Under the provincial governor's office, we have here a request of the Honorable Governor, Quea Edwin Ayubahib, to fund the personals from his office, the co-terminals positions which are not funded since. Actually, he requested this on his first term, but we requested him considering that our resources are so limited. So, we opted to have this on the second term of the Honorable Governor. Thus, this request, which give us a total amount of only 3,169,863 for the positions under his offices specifically for driver and a private secretary was. Then, the other maintenance and the operating expenses such as the representation expense and the membership dues and contributions to organizations in the amount of 1.454,926 pesos, giving us a total of 4,624,789. And then, under the Human Capital Enhancement Program, what is given is only the technical and scientific equipment in the amount of 700,000 pesos. This is in support of our Davnor Bank, not to buy new instruments for the bank considering that the last time that they have purchased their instruments is around 2018 to 2019. So, there's a need for them to have a new set of instruments. Okay, on the next item is on the Vice Governor's office. And so, we have there an request for the MOOE in a total amount of 1,505,000. And the legislative research project. So, we have here for the other general services is intended for the salaries and wages additional appropriation in the amount of 697,000 pesos. On the next page, please. Okay, that's for the Vice Governor's office. For the Sanguniang Pandalawigan Office, we have there some payables and adjustment from our personnel, just an amount of 1,500. And the membership dues and contributions to organizations in the amount of 35,000 pesos. Then, for the office equipment, this is for the photocapper in the amount of 200,000 requested by our committee chair on budget and appropriation. And then, the information and communication technology equipment in the amount of 1,660,000 intended for the laptops of all the executive, the legislative Sanguniang Pandalawigan Vice Governor. Then, for the office of the Secretary to the Sanguniang, we have a request for the MOOE in the amount of 876,000. Then, for the other office supplies expenses, an additional of 100,000 pesos. The next, on the provincial administrator's office, what is given here is only for our payables for the utility expenses up to December of this year. This is for the water expenses in the amount of 2.5 million and the electricity expenses amounted to 15 million. Our electricity right now ranges an average of 4 million per month. So, we have a shortage up to the end of this year, 2020. Then, for the operationalization of our jail, they requested the replacement of their freezer in the amount of 65,000 pesos. So, it's really a need for them considering that it's here that they're going to put their mga ano nila, to stock their foods, no? Under the Human Resource Office, the request is only for the reproduction machine also, the amount of 200,000. Then, for the Provincial Planning and Development Office, this are just the adjustment of the personal services. So, nagka-short lang siya sa allocations. So, in the amount of 19,500. Under the General Services, we have also an adjustment on the personal services for the retirement in the amount of 5,250. Then, for the fuel, it's only the PGSO who have the allocation for fuel. Considering na medyo the local finance or the budget office committed a mistake last supplemental budget number two because all of the offices last supplemental budget were given an increase of 25%. On the total, it should be 400,000 for the PGSO. Unfortunately, what was written in the budget is only 40,000 pesos. So, we have a short of 360,000 wherein we have to give them their allocation. Thus, this request. And the other supplies and materials in the amount of 100,000 pesos. Then, for the office equipment under the PGSO, we have here the request. So, we have here the 450,000. This is intended for the air conditioner unit, which was, I think this is a request for the provincial health office considering that their unit is already operational. So, we, they really have a need for this purchase now of the air conditioning unit. Then, the motor vehicle intended for the utility van of the PGSO, this is an additional amount, no, asked from them considering na medyo short ang allocation for their utility van. Then, the mega tent intended for the whole province, we have here an amount of 2.5 million pesos. Then, for the GSO. So, that's for the Provincial General Services Office. Then, for the Provincial Information, Communication and Knowledge Management Office, we have there the other maintenance and operating expenses in the amount of 1,095 pesos. This is a payable to PTB4. Think, we have here a notice from the PTB4 billing from the People's Television Network, no? So, I think this is for year 2017 to 2019. So, we're given a bill. When they give us also that building there or the tower there, they correspondingly ask also the payment for these payables from the province. Okay. So, from the RTC, from the Regional Trial Court, so this has their own, this is, they have a source for this for the other professional services, 198,000. And for the furnitures and fixtures, they have 24,500. Under the social services, so we have here from Sido, for the awards, rewards and prizes, they have also a source for, for this, the amount of 226,000 pesos. They just have realigned, no, their programs. On the provincial engineers' office, so we have here the different items for the infrastructure requirement. Source from this also is from the 20% development fund, no? Okay, so we have there the construction of the tennis court, lighting and sports complex center, Mangkilam, in the amount of 1.5 million pesos. Okay, then for the provincial health office, we have here an adjustment of the allocation for the nurse two. They have a source from this, no, they... Okay, they, they, I think, they declared the position nurse, nursery, I think nursery, then converted to nurse two. So, there's a need for this to be included in the supplemental budget. So, a requirement of 15,648,439 to include the retirement and life insurance and everything for that positions. Then, for the water expenses, payable 15,000 pesos. See, for the provincial engineers' office, we have here infrastructure development programs. For the hospitals and health centers, we have here a request from the Kapalong District Zone, the amount for the renovation and expansion of their laboratory in the amount of 4 million pesos. Then, for the various government buildings and facilities under the 20% development fund, we have an additional appropriation for the construction of infirmary hospital in the amount of 357,898 to complete the requirement. Then, under the provincial social welfare services, we have here the, the other compensation for the honor area. So, this is just a transfer from one account to another account to correct, no, based on the COA, um, audit report. So, there's an adjustment, na it transfer account of the honor area of the Davao del Norte Federation of Senior Citizens, the Persons with Disabilities, the Pagasa Youth Association of the Philippines, the Child Development Teachers Workers to the appropriate account, thus giving us the 1,014,000 pesos. thus giving us the 1,014,000 pesos. It has a source of funds. Then, on the maintenance and other operating expenses for the welfare good expenses, still under the PSWDO, is the amount of 1.8 million. So, for the social protection and intervention program, they requested the welfare goods expense of 230,000. Then, for the community and family welfare project, so they have a source for this. This is just a change of account, so in the amount of 134,000 pesos, giving us a total of 3,178,000 for the social welfare services. So, on the, under the provincial administrator's office, on the human capital enhancement program specifically on the cooperative support initiative to food sufficiency program. So, there's a source of funds from this. They just have to change the account. On the awards, rewards and prizes in the amount of 139,500 pesos. On the provincial agriculturist office, so same with that of the provincial social welfare, they changed the account of the honorarium of the barangay agriculture workers. So, they have, we have here 1,784,000 pesos and the retirement and life insurance in the amount of 49 pesos. That's for Pagro. Then, for the agribusiness development project, they have, for the maintenance and other operating expenses, they have this request on the training expense, office supplies and the printing and publication expenses in the total amount of 350,000 pesos. This comes also from their fund. Then, from the PVO on the dairy development project, they have the installation of the 75 kVA power supply and electrical accessories, which is really needed on the dairy plant, in the amount of 1.5 million. For Pendrod, just an adjustment on the personal services and that of the other supplies and material expenses, giving us a 60,804. And on their land management program, they have there the technical and scientific equipment in the amount of 850,000 pesos. Then, for the provincial engineers' office, so we have here the other general services in the amount of 1,581,973. So, this is for engineering infrastructure also. Then, they have the other item for the infrastructure projects. So, the rehabilitation improvement of the main line electrical wiring for the CSC, Dolly Building, here within the government center in the amount of 390. Then, the construction of Kanalining at National Comprehensive High School at Barangay Mangkilam inside our complex, 300,000 pesos. And the road upgrading of Missay Junction, Mahayay Provincial Road, New Kore, in the amount of 15,000, 15 million pesos, rather. This is for the improvement of provincial roads and bridges. And for the slope protection along Pandulian Junction, San Miguel, they have also an appropriation of 15 million pesos. So, these are change of nomenclature and that of the change of, I think, mga items lang. On the 20% development fund, we have there the construction of the provincial jail admin building, government center. So, this is a new proposal, considering that Davao de Oro had already vacated the portion of the jail occupied by them. So, we have to rehabilitate our jail in the amount of 3 million pesos. Then, still for the buildings, various government buildings and facilities, so we have there the following, the improvement of Barangay facility at Pagsabangan Tagong City. So, these are just adjustments as required, considering the small amount as requested by the provincial engineers' office. These are to support the variation orders. Then, under park development projects, also for variation orders. Then, the still on improvement of covered courts, mature stage at Barangay Anu na Igakos, the amount of 1.5 million. So, the total locally funded programs under 20% development fund amounted to 6,415,976. Then, for the equipment pool, we have another, for the other general services. Actually, the other general services for the PEO, medyo daku dudyan, it reaches to around, I think, 50 million under the supplemental budget number three, considering that this is based on the COA report that we have to transfer the charges of that salaries and wages from the programs and projects. We really have to fund it from the general fund. Thus, this requirement, which is a majority, a big box at to ang supplemental budget number three. So, this is our employees for the provincial engineers' office. So, then, for the provincial disaster risk reduction management, this is under the 5% calamity fund. So, this has been discussed and approved by the provincial disaster risk reduction management council. So, they have there the under DRR CCA promotion awareness and advocacy project in the amount of 2,492,696. On the emergency preparedness in the amount of 1 million, giving us a total of, under the total disaster preparedness program in the amount of 3,492,696 and 73 centavos. Under the disaster prevention and mitigation program, we have there 500,000 pesos. Then, under the disaster preparedness program, we have 420,000 pesos. Then, the total disaster preparedness program requires 2,170,000 pesos. Under the disaster prevention and mitigation program still, on the data and information management project, so if there are requests, then giving us a total appropriation under the general fund proper of one, total other purposes of 6,272,696 and 73 centavos. So, to sum up all, this total to 109,821,583 and 73 centavos for our supplemental budget number three.
Thank you, Ma'am Jean, floor leader. From the floor, anyone who would like to interpolate or ask?
Thank you, Mr. President. From the floor, Mr. President.
Yes, please.
One of the source of funds is borrowings from the land bank with the amount of 1.5 million. May we know what is the original account or item of the said 1.5 million approved by the land bank?
Okay, just a change of nomenclature from construction of the covered court to improvement rehabilitation.
The original is?
Construction.
Construction of what?
Of covered court, which says CR Barangay at Barangay Anu na Igakos.
That's part of the, part of the 1.5 ginatag at sa Barangay.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, your honor.
From?
From the word construction to improvement bar rehab. So, dili mo gusya full, or full construction, new construction, but rather it's just an improvement of the existing building that they have.
Would the bank allow that?
We have to go on the supplemental through an ordinance, thus this request.
Not a single ordinance with regards to the 1.5?
Okay na siya, sir.
Okay na siya, Ana.
Through supplemental.
Oh, another, Mr. President, is the allocation of 2.5 million for water expenses and 15 million for the electricity expenses?
Yes, yes, sir.
This 15 million for electricity expenses, is this an additional budget on top of the budget that we already approved?
Yes, sir, that's on top of our budget. Because as mentioned, we have an average now of 4 million per month for our electricity expense, the whole government center.
May we know how much we budget for the year 2022 for electricity?
30 million, your honor.
20 million?
30.
30?
Yes, 30.
Is there any additional electricity use that we?
Wala, your honor. Considering kasi ang kilowatt na to from 12 pesos, it runs up to 17 pesos to 18 pesos per kilowatt right now.
So, a price increase?
Yeah, price increase.
And the water expenses?
Same with that, na shortas atong water expenses, nag-increase po daw ang water supplies. This is for, not for the drinking, dili to siyang bottled or container, but this is for our supply from the Tagum Water District.
On the Office of Provincial General Services Office, the 2.5 million, other property, plant and equipment?
Ah, the 2.5 million, your honor?
Yes.
That's for the mega tent. So, that's a proposal of PGSO, considering that all our tents were already dilapidated.
For what, ma'am?
Mega tents.
And the provincial information office, may we know what is this 1,095 payable year 2017, 2019?
Yeah, that's a payable to Philippine TV Network. That's from 2017. They have a breakdown for this. This was given to us by PTB4.
Do we have contract on that?
Yeah, they have, we have.
And I do believe that this chamber would not approve any contract without a budget?
Yeah, but this is the past, ano pa ng gudis, sir, past administration. So, we were billed out, tumpaghatag nila sa tuwa with that tower that we have right now. They given us around 40 million for that. So, with the release of the 40 million, they build out that we have an outstanding balance from them. So, giving us all the documents. So, upon scrutinizing, it's a legal document and we really have to pay to them.
Yes, I agree with you. It's a legal document, considering it has a contract. But my query is that the Sanggunian would not approve any contract without a budget. That's one thing for sure.
Yeah, we really don't know what.
What happened? Ngano, ngano namatay negative pa dya?
They have, actually, as a background, according to the old team from PICMO, they have a budget for this year, 2017, 2018. Unfortunately, they weren't able to process it. I just don't know why. So, naklase ang account kay MOE.
You mentioned while ago that the budget for these barangay health workers are just transferred from?
Yeah, from one account to another account.
May we know from, so it shows that there's a saving of 11,356? It should be, there's a savings, kasi transfer lang siya.
Wala siya savings, sir. The same amount transferred to, from donation to, under the office of the provincial social welfare and development office.
From what office?
From the governor's office under donation. So, from donation, sealed from the social welfare office, the same office, ang iyalang account from donation to other general services.
Then, the original account?
The same.
Should be declared a savings?
Yes, yes, sir.
May we know which part sa tuang, kuwan savings na makita ang kanina among?
Ah, okay. So, we have here the savings from MOE account, current appropriation, community and family welfare project in the amount of 4,296,000 under number eight.
4 million?
Yeah.
And if it is just a transfer, then it should be apple to apple. What I mean is a 4.296, and it also should be 4.296 million. So, you cannot transfer a 4.296 million to 11.356 million?
No, 18, 18, 4, 10. Asang 11.2, sir. I think we only have here.
The same with the provincial agriculture's office, the 1.784?
So, your honor, we have here the total of 1,014,000. So, this is for DNFC, A, PWD, PAP and DCT. So, the amount of 4 million is the total available funds from PSWD. So, we just sourced out the total amount of 4,296,000, also to fund the other requirements of the PSWDO.
So, it's not a total 100% transfer?
No, no, ang itransfer lang is this 1,014.
Transfer.
Yeah.
And then additional funds for the 60%?
Allocation.
The same with the agriculture's office?
Yes, yes, your honor. A portion lang, Ana, siya.
Anybody from the floor would like to ask query for, I guess? Please recognize board member Amit, Mr. President.
Honorable Amit is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Floor Leader. Query lang nako, Ma'am Jean, kining, kining loan sa land bank is ang inyo hang decision ano sa una is hatagan ang tanang barangay?
Oh, 1.5 million, part, part of the loan. 1.5, no, dili tanan. Ang atong nanay allocation from that of Elcock to SBDP in the amount of 20 million pesos, gi out siya, considering na dili pod makaya nga 223 barangays be given the amount of 1.5 million.
So, you were saying, except Elcock-funded projects, the rest of all barangays are funded?
Yeah, gi tigahan sila, tag 1.5. Yeah. Pero there are barangays na medyo dili siya exact 1.5. Kaya there are projects na to na ongoing ditunga, wala na human, of which there's a need for it to be added. So, gi dugangan siya. I think na mga certain barangays. It depends on the proposal, on the items given by the provincial engineers' office based on their evaluation and assessment. So, it's the provincial engineers' office.
So, dili gyod tanan, matas nga tag 1.5?
I think gamay lang ang katunay increase, katung na atay ongoing projects na dili pod enough ang atuang funding from the general, from the local funds that we have. But generally, majority is 1.5 million each.
So, kiniba tanan karoon is na release na tanan?
May portion wala, no? Napa, no? Napay portion na wala, gamay na lang.
May di may mga yo og report, any?
Ah, we will ask the provincial engineers' office to give us a copy of that, your honor.
Yes, thank you.
Any other members? There is none, no? CR, past floor leader. Is it okay that anyone will move for the restoration of the rules? Can I ask, ah, there is our floor leader. There are no more members who would like to interpolate, so. Direction, floor leader?
Sir, before, I would just like to extend my thanks to this honorable buddy for really supporting the executive department. Thank you very much.
One last question addressed to the budget office, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Query lang, ma'am. Before an employee can be appointed or start his work, a certification from the budget office is needed certifying that is, there is fund that will support that employee. So, the presumption of this representation is nothing in this budget that will be used to pay people working on the ground without budget? Yes, ma'am, that was, that's the question. The, considering that the budget office will certify that there is fund available to support an employee's work, so the presumption of this representation is nothing in this budget proposal now will be used to pay for employees working on the ground?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr., oh, good morning, Mr. Honorable Presiding Officer and to the members of this, honorable members of this august body. With regards to your query, Honorable Early Amit, I would just, I would just like to inform that based on the Ora Ora, is no longer the provincial budget of?
it's no longer the Provincial Budget Office who will certify the availability as to appointment or hiring of employees. It's already the Provincial Accountant's Office. And with regards to the supplemental, additional appropriation included in the supplemental budget to pay for the salaries and wages of casuals and job-order employees, this is intended for the period October, November, December, considering that the renewal for... is only good for three months, July to September.
So the answer to the question is nothing in this budget will be used to pay previous obligation?
Yes, po, yes, po. It's for the next quarter.
So it is now the City Accountant Office who will certify that the employee being hired is covered with budget?
Yes, po, based on the ORA-ORA of the Civil Service Commission.
Ah, okay. So it is the City Accountant who will certify that?
The Provincial Accountant, po.
I mean, the Provincial Accountant. That's clear now. So it is from your office transferred to the City Accountant's Office? I just would like to emphasize that, Mr. Chairman, because ah, nalearn ako ano eh, sa dihang nagdiliberate mig budget sa una sa Samal. My experience is, sa dihang nagdiliberate mig budget, daghang mga tao ninduol dito, unya giingnan ko nga, "Sir, ikaw man daw nagbabag sa among sweldo." Kay kinide ang budget nga gihisgutan. Ah, pang sweldo day sa mga tao nga ilang gihire, bisag wala'y budget. So pwede unta kasuhan ang budget officer pero malukoy mapunta, no? So kana lang siguro, Mr. Chairman, ang gusto na akong maklaro, at least karoon, it's very clear from the statement of our Budget Office that nothing in this budget will be used to pay previous obligation that was hired without the budget. Thank you very much for that answer.
Thank you, Honorable Amit. Honorable Pamisaran?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on the presentation, it was mentioned a while ago that supposed to be in the supplemental budget number three, we need 150 million, more or less, no? As per requested by the different department concerned. But considering that we are short of source of fund to fund the said request, since we have only 109 available fund, may I know from the Local Finance Committee or the Concerned Department, how would you assess with regards to the prioritization of the supplemental budget? Considering that it was submitted in the amount of 150 million as per requested from different department and since we have short of source of fund, how would you assess on the process of prioritization, ma'am? How would you assess?
Okay, actually, sir, we evaluated and we analyzed the need of the different offices. So first, the local finance celebrated and agreed to prioritize first the other general services, considering that we are talking here warm bodies. So if ever there's a need for an additional appropriation for this, so we have to allocate for that requirement. Like, for example, the adjustment of their premiums, considering na medyo na mga some short computations of our Provincial Human Resource Management Office. But then for additional requirement, we don't have any allocation for that, for new items under the other general services. Then the next priority is on the payables of our utilities. So, motusha, then that of the adjustment of the Provincial Personal Services, that of the adjustment from the Provincial Engineers' Office, considering that we have already those personals existing. So we really have to fund it regardless of the amount. So motusha, nakait up sa tuwang atong atong budget. And next is on the requirement of the different offices as to the needs. We evaluated the different allocations of the different offices based on their MOE and that of their actual utilization of their funds. So if a certain office has still an existing balance up to the end of this year, then medyo per evaluation, kaya pa niya mo-operate, then wala siya giconsider. So that's how the local finance, one by one per office, based on the utilization.
But to those requested not granted, I presume, it will be presumed that on the next succeeding supplemental budget, I'm referring to supplemental budget number four, will be accommodated or is there another process?
Hopefully, if we have available funds. But I think for the next supplemental budget, we have to prioritize the benefits intended for our employees come December. Yeah, but we are only looking into the possible source from the savings of our personal services. We don't have any other source of funds. Okay, that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pamisaran.
Mr. President, considering that we are through with our guests, I move for the restoration of the rules.
Before that, I would like to say thank you, again, once again, to the Executive Department, represented by our Provincial Administrator and Department Heads. Thank you for coming. Um, there's a motion for the restoration of the rules. Any second, please. Um, Honorable Lu, Silutan, Aala, Parangan. Remarks, observations, objections, hearing none. Rules are now restored. Let us proceed, Esp. Secretary.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, Your Honors, the reading and referral of proposed measures or communications, proposed ordinance, none. Proposed resolution, lone item. Authored and filed by Honorable DeCarlo Lui, Vice Governor, this province, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on September 2, 2022, forwarded to this august body for legislative action entitled, congratulating and commending Mr. Neil Joquin Montebon Tebar for being the gold medalist in the 100-meter backstroke and silver medalist in the 100-meter breaststroke of the 2022 Finnish Short Course Swim Competition National Finals on August 20 to 21, 2022.
Floor leader, please.
Ah, Mr. President, please recognize board member Silutan, Mr. President.
Honorable Silutan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Floor Leader. Mr. President, I understand the urgency of the said proposed legislative measure to give recognition to the commendable achievement of one of our double-known constituent. Therefore, I move to delete this item under the first reading and transfer this item to the unassigned business.
Thank you, Honorable Silutan. Any second, please, Honorable Parangan. Seconded by Honorable Parangan and Remitar. Remarks, observations, amendments, objections, hearing none. Motion is hereby approved. May the Chair get the two-thirds votes for the motion to be accommodated?
For two-thirds votes, Mr. President, Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Remitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimous, Mr. President.
Thank you. A motion presented by Honorable Silutan is hereby approved.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, letters, communications, requests, item one. Letter dated September 1, 2022, Mr. Aldwin Dominic J. Sayon, Secretary to the Sanggunan, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on September 2, 2022, submitted to this august body for review and confirmation, appropriation ordinance number 08-22 of the Sanggunan-Panlongsood of the Island Garden City of Samal, this province, an ordinance appropriating the sum of 10,873,200 pesos taken from the unappropriated balance per supplemental budget number 03, CY 2022 savings per LBPF number 161-B, additional realized income for current operating expenditures of the Island Garden City of Samal as embodied into the General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 4, CY 2022.
Item number one is referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations.
Item two, letter soldated August 25, 2022, Mr. Aldwin Dominic J. Sayon, Secretary to the Sanggunan, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on August 26, 2022, submitted to this august body for review and confirmation, augmentation ordinances of the Sanggunan-Panlongsood of the Island Garden City of Samal, this province, TUI. 2.1, AU Number 23-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 170,000 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City Mayor's Office, open and close parenthesis, counterpart of peso special project, to another items of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 2.2, AU Number 24-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 226,500 pesos taken from the budget of two items under MOE in the City Investment and Tourism Office, open and close parenthesis, regular PS and regular MOE, to another items of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 2.3, AU Number 25-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 54,000 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City Planning and Development Office, open and close parenthesis, relocation and resettlement program to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 2.4, AU Number 26-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 100,000 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City General Services to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 2.5, AU Number 28-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 162,180 pesos taken from the budget of four items under MOE in the City Environment and Natural Resources Office to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 2.6, AU Number 29-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 2,500 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City Environment or Natural Resources Office, open and close parenthesis, Forest 3, Nursery Development and Management Program to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 2.7, AU Number 30-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 923,905 pesos and 28 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City Health Office, open and close parenthesis, emerging/reemerging disease program to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160.
All measures of item number two are referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations.
Item three, letter soldated September 1, 2022 of Mr. Aldwin Dominic J. Sayon, Secretary to the Sanggunan, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on September 2, 2022, submitted to this august body for review and confirmation, augmentation ordinances of the Sanggunan-Panlongsood of the Island Garden City of Samal, this province, TUI. 3.1, AU Number 27-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 34,000 pesos taken from the budget of two items under MOE in the City Tourism Office, open and close parenthesis, Pangapug Festival, to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 3.2, AU Number 31-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 25,000 pesos taken from the budget of two items under MOE in MTCC Clerk of Court to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 3.3, AU Number 32-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 48,000 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City Accounting Office, open and close parenthesis, Records Management Program to another items of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 3.4, AU Number 33-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 30,000 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City Investment and Tourism Office, open and close parenthesis, Community Base to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160. 3.5, AU Number 34-2022, authorizing the LCE to augment the amount of 95,000 pesos taken from the budget of one item under MOE in the City Planning and Development Office, open and close parenthesis, relocation and resettlement program to another item of the same office and expense class in accordance with Section 336 of RA 7160.
All measures of item number three are referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations.
Item four, first endorsement dated 31 August 2022 of Ms. Juliette Evangelista de Anton, Secretary to the Sanggunan, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on September 1, 2022, submitted to this august body for review and approval. Municipal Ordinance Number 304, Series 2022 of the Sanggunan Bayan of Carmen, this province, amending Municipal Ordinance Number 299, Series 2021, known as Institutionalizing the Poneraria Sa Massa Program in the Municipality of Carmen, Dava del Norte, prescribing guidelines to ensure effective and efficient implementation and allocating funds, therefore, particularly in section six thereof.
Item number four is referred to the Committee on Social Services as Lead Committee, Committee on Laws, Resolutions, Ordinances, Justice and Human Rights and Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations.
Item five, first endorsement dated September 1, 2022 of Ms. Salvacion E. Donado, Secretary to the Sanggunan, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on September 1, 2022, forwarded to this august body for confirmation, Municipal Ordinance Number 280, Series 2022 of the Sanggunan Bayan of Talaingo, this province, adapting the program and awards incentive for service excellence or PRAISE, revised policies on employee suggestions and incentive award system or ESIAS.
Item number five is referred to the Committee on Labor and Employment.
Item six, letter dated August 30, 2022, Mr. Ray A. Buhyon, Secretary to the Sanggunan, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on August 30, 2022, transmitted to this august body for review and confirmation. Resolution Number 54, Series 2022 of the Sanggunan-Panlongsood of Tagum, this province, a resolution approving the amendments of the annual investment program for calendar year 2022, open and close parenthesis, AIPCY 2022, by inclusion and modification as embodied under interim City Development Council Resolution Number 03, Series of 2022.
Item number six is referred to the Committee on Human Settlements, Planning and Development.
Item seven, letter dated 15 August 2022 of Honorable Edwin Ayubahib, Governor, this province, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on August 30, 2022, forwarded to this august body for urgent legislative action, the request granting an omnibus authority to the Honorable Governor to make, enter into and sign instruments relative to the grant of financial assistance to LGUs with schools implementing SPED or SPED program for and in behalf of the Provincial Government of Dava del Norte with information that the Office of the Governor has reviewed the same in consideration of the attached legal opinion. Dated August 16, 2022, Attorney Sharina C. Cabrera, Provincial Legal Officer. Mr. President, this item is certified as urgent.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, considering that there is an urgent need to pass a legislation catering to said request for the reasons presented earlier by our resource speakers during the questionnaire, I therefore move that this item be deleted from first reading and be transferred to unassigned business. I so move.
Any second, please. Seconded by Honorable Pamisaran, Amit, Aala, Parangan, Tanong Mabulok. Remarks, observations, amendments, objections, hearing none. Motion presented is hereby approved.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, addendum for today's regular session, duly approved by the Chairperson Committee on Rules and Privileges, the Honorable Robert L. So of District 1. Letter, item one, letter dated August 31, 2022 of Honorable Edwin Ayubahib, Governor, this province, duly received at the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunan-Panlalawigan on September 5, 2022, forwarded to this august body for consideration and corresponding legislative action, the following items. A, declaration of savings of the following items are certified by the Provincial Budget Officer, Provincial Accountant and the Provincial Treasurer and same shall accrue to government equity, open and close parenthesis, available for operation of the General Fund proper and be made available as a source of fund for supplemental budget number 3, CY 2022, TUI. Savings from PS accounts, current appropriation various offices, 39,19,600 pesos. Savings from PS accounts, current appropriation BGO Lamsum, 382,501 pesos. Savings from PS accounts, current appropriation OSS, 2,665,936 pesos. Savings from PS accounts, current appropriation PHO, 354,239 pesos. Savings from PS accounts, current appropriation PBO EPM Lamsum, 3,272,611 pesos. Savings from PPE accounts, current appropriation PADO, 100,000 pesos. Savings from MOE accounts, current appropriation various PPEs, PHO, 15,524,000 pesos. Savings from MOE accounts, current appropriation Community and Family Welfare Project, 4,296,000 pesos. Savings from MOE accounts, current appropriation Co-op Support Initiative to Food Sufficiency Project, 139,500 pesos. Savings from MOE accounts, current appropriation Daily Development Project, 1,500 pesos. Savings from PPE accounts, current appropriation PDRRMF Data Information and Management Project, 110,000 pesos. Savings from MOE and PPE account or current appropriation, continuing allotment, continuing appropriation... appropriation various PD RRMF projects, 6,162,696.73 pesos. Savings from PPE account current appropriation 20% Development Fund, PEO various government building and facilities development projects, 3 million pesos. Savings from PPE account continuing allotment RTC Branch IV, 24,500 pesos, with a total amount of 25,466,970 pesos. B Authorization of the proposed CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number Three involving the total amount of 109,821,583.73 pesos. Mr. President, this item is certified as urgent.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, considering that this measure needs urgent legislative action for the approval of calendar year 2022, General Fund Supplemental Budget Number Three involving the total amount of 109,821,583.73 pesos in order to fund various programs, projects, and activities to be prioritized for implementation this year, I therefore move for that this item be deleted from addendum and be transferred to the unassigned business. I so move.
Any second, please. Honorable Amit, Aala, Pamisaran, Rimitar. Remarks, observation, amendments, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Mr. President, in support to the opening ceremony of the years, this year's Capitolimpics of the provincial government of Dava del Norte, scheduled on September 12, 2022 in the morning, which is in line to the 122nd Philippine Civil Service Anniversary Celebration, I therefore move to temporarily suspend our internal rules or procedures, particularly Rule 5, Section 1 thereof by changing the time of the 11th regular session from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which shall be conducted on Monday, September 12, 2022, through a resolution to the included under unassigned business in order for this August body to actively participate on the said activity. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Amit, Aala, Silutan, Pamisaran, Rimitar, Tanong Mabulok. Remarks, observation, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved. May the Chair get the two-thirds vote for the motion to be accommodated?
Mr. President, for two-third votes, Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously, Mr. President.
Motion presented by the floor leader is hereby approved.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, committee reports.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of committee report as indicated in order of business. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, remarks, observation, amendments, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Mr. President, for item number one, committee report number 10 dated August 31, 2022 of the Committee on Ways and Means, Games and Amusements, kindly recognize the Chairperson, Senior Board Member, Board Member Katalan.
Honorable Katalan is now recognized by the Chair.
Mr. President, a motion be passed dispensing the reading of committee report number 10.
Any second, please. Honorable Pamisaran, Aala, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Another motion, Mr. President, for the adoption of the committee report number 10. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Tanong Mabulok, Pamisaran, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Mr. President, for item number two, committee report numbers 137, 138, 139, 140, and 141, all dated August 10, 2022. Item number three, committee report numbers 144, 145, 147, 148, 149, and 150, all dated August 17, 2022. And item number four, committee report numbers 151, 152, 153, and 154, all dated August 30, 2022, all from the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, kindly recognize the committee Chairperson, Board Member, Amit, Mr. President.
Honorable Amit is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Floor Leader. Mr. President, I move to dispense with the reading of the thus-mentioned committee reports, Mr. Charman.
Any second, please. Honorable Tanong Mabulok, Aala, Pamisaran, Lu, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved under omnibus motion.
Mr. President, I move that the same be adapted under omnibus motion, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, Tanong Mabulok, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved under omnibus motion.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, the adoption of the agenda.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented in order of business in today's regular session.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Amit, Tanong Mabulok, Pamisaran, remarks, observations, amendments?
Amendment, Mr. President.
Please proceed.
Mr. President, I move for the inclusion of appropriation ordinance number 2022-003 as well as resolution numbers 552, 553, and 554, all series of 2022 under unassigned business. I so move.
Any second. Honorable Aala, Tanong Mabulok, Pamisaran, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, your honors, the calendar of business. Unfinished business, both ordinance and resolution, none. Business for the day, ordinance, none. Resolutions, item one, resolution number 536, series 2022, approving city ordinance number 378, series 2022 of the Sangunian Panlungsod of the Island Garden City of Samaldes Province, and ordinance approving the formula for the computation of total package price for the local government unit-owned relocation sites in the Island Garden City of Samal.
Floor leader, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. For this measure, kindly recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means, Games and Amusements, Senior Board Member, Board Member Katalan.
Honorable Katalan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. A motion be passed, Mr. President, to dispense the reading of resolution number 536. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Another motion, Mr. President, is for the approval of resolution number 536. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Tanong Mabulok, Pamisaran, remarks, observations, objections, kindly deliver your sponsorship speech.
Mr. President, let the title and the contents of the proposed measure be my sponsorship speech.
Any remarks, questions? From the floor. There is none, observation, objection, amendments, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading. Please pass this on third and final reading.
I, for third and final reading, I so move, Mr. President.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Let the title of this resolution number 537 now serve as my sponsorship speech, Mr. President.
Any questions? Remarks, observations, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading. Please pass this on third and final reading.
I so move, Mr. President, that this measure be approved under third and final reading, Mr. President.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution number 537, series of 2022, is approved on third and final reading.
Item three, resolution number 538, series 2022, declaring operative appropriation ordinance number 04/2022 of the Sangunian Panlungsod of the Island Garden City of Samaldes Province, embodying the calendar year or CY 2022, General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 02, effective upon the date of its approval, subject to the remainder here to stated and the posting requirement under section 59 of Republic Act Number 7160.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, considering that the item number four and five also pertain to another appropriation ordinance embodying the respective general fund supplemental budgets of the Sangunian Bayan of Santo Tomas and Sangunian Bayan of Carmen, respectively, kindly authorize the Secretary to read the resolution numbers only of the said item.
SP Secretary, kindly read the resolution numbers only.
Mr. President, item four, resolution number 539, of item five, resolution number 540, item six, after, up to five, Mr. President.
Floor leader.
For these measures, kindly recognize again Honorable Amit, Mr. President.
Honorable Amit is recognized.
Mr. President, I move to dispense the reading of these items, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, Tanong Mabulok, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved under omnibus motion.
I further move, Mr. President, that item number four, five, and six be approved under second reading, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Parangan, Pamisaran, Lu, Tanong Mabulok, remarks, observations, objections, please deliver your sponsorship speech.
Let the gist of these resolutions, 539, 540, and 541, will now serve as my sponsorship speech, Mr. President.
Any further remarks? Observations, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading under omnibus motion. Kindly pass this on third and final reading, Honorable Amit.
I further move, Mr. President, to approve this under third and final readings after item, for correction, Mr. President, item number, for a while, Mr. President. Resolution number 538, 539, and 540, Mr. President. I so move for its approval, Mr. President.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution numbers 538, 539, and 540, all series of 2022, are approved on third and final reading under omnibus motion.
Item six, resolution number 541, series 2022, declaring partially operative appropriation ordinance number 04/2022 of the Sangunian Bayan of Talayingo, this province, embodying the calendar year 2022, General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 03, effective upon the date of its approval, subject to the conditions and reminders here to stated and posting requirement under section 59 of Republic Act Number 7160.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, for this measure, kindly recognize again Honorable Amit.
Honorable Amit is recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Floor Leader. I move, Mr. President, that the reading of this resolution 541 be dispensed.
Second, Honorable Pamisaran, Aala, Silutan, Tanong Mabulok, Lu, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
I further move, Mr. President, that resolution number 541 be approved under second reading, Mr. President.
Seconded by Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, Tanong Mabulok, remarks, observations, objections, please deliver your sponsorship speech.
Let the gist of this, the title of this resolution, Mr. President, as well as the reminders, will now serve as my sponsorship speech, Mr. President.
Any further remarks? Observations, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading. Please pass this on third and final reading.
I so move, Mr. President, that resolution number 541 be approved under third and final reading.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution number 541, series of 2022, is approved on third and final reading.
Item seven, resolution number 542, series 2022, declaring partially operative appropriation ordinance number 2022-02 of the Sangunian Bayan of San Isidro, this province, embodying the General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 2, series 2022, effective upon the date of its approval, subject to the reminders here to stated and the posting requirement under section 59 of Republic Act Number 7160.
Floor leader, please.
For this measure, kindly recognize again Honorable Amit, Mr. President.
Honorable Amit is recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Floor Leader. I move, Mr. President, that reading of resolution number 542 be dispensed, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Tanong Mabulok, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
I further move, Mr. President, that resolution number 542 be approved under second reading, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Tanong Mabulok, Lu, remarks, observations, objections, please deliver your sponsorship speech.
Mr. President, let the title of this appropriation ordinance, as well as the reminders, Mr. President, will serve now as my sponsorship speech, Mr. President.
Any further remarks? Observations, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading. Kindly pass this on third and final reading.
Mr. President, I move that resolution 542 be approved under third and final reading, Mr. President.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution number 542, series of 2022, is approved on third and final reading.
Item eight, resolution number 543, series 2022, approving municipal ordinance number 1235, series 2022 of the Sangunian Bayan of Kapalong, this province, an ordinance authorizing the augmentation of funds in the sum of 80,000 pesos under the office of the municipal agriculturist LGU Kapalong, intended for its repair and maintenance, building and other structures worth 40,000 pesos and for its electricity expenses worth 40,000 pesos, with sources of funds duly taken from allotment balances from its other MOE accounts.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, considering that the item numbers nine up to sixteen also pertain to another augmentation ordinances of the Sangunian Bayan of Kapalong, Sangunian Bayan of San Isidro, in Sangunian Bayan of Santo Tomas, kindly authorize the Secretary to read the resolution numbers only of the said item.
SP Secretary, please read the resolution numbers only of the said items.
Mr. President, item nine, resolution number 544, item ten, resolution number 545, item eleven, resolution number 546, item twelve, resolution number 547, item thirteen, resolution number 548, item fourteen, resolution number 549, item fifteen, resolution number 550, item sixteen, resolution number 551, all series of 2022, Mr. President.
Floor leader, please.
Mr. President, for these measures, kindly recognize again Honorable Amit, Mr. President.
Honorable Amit is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Floor Leader. Mr. President, I move to dispense the reading of items number eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Lu, Tanong Mabulok, remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved under omnibus motion.
I further move, Mr. President, under omnibus motion, that items number eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen be approved under second reading, Mr. President.
Any second, please. Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, Tanong Mabulok, Lu, remarks, observations, objections, please deliver your sponsorship speech.
Mr. President, considering that these are augmentation ordinances, the colorful discussions as well as the intentions of the legislators of these municipalities to serve their public constituents, Mr. President, will now serve as my sponsorship speech, Mr. President.
Any further remarks? Observations, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading under omnibus motion. Please pass this on third and final reading.
Mr. President, I move to approve under third and final readings and final reading on item number eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and sixteen, Mr. President. I so move.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution number 543, 544, 545, 546, 547, 548, 549, 550, 551, all series of 2022, are approved on of 2022, are approved on third and final reading under omnibus motion.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, unassigned business, ordinance, loan item, appropriation ordinance number 2022-003, appropriating the amount of 109,821,583 pesos and 73 cents from sources of funds and for purposes herein mentioned for CY 2022, general fund supplemental budget number three of the Province of Davao del Norte.
Floor Leader, please.
Mr. President, for this measure, kindly recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, Board Member Orlie A. Amit, Mr. President.
Board Member Orlie Amit is recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Floor Leader. Mr. President, I move to dispense the reading of appropriation ordinance number 2022-003, Mr. President, considering that we already heard the explanation of no less than our local finance committee members and Chair, Mr. President.
Any second please, Honorable Aala. Remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
I further move, Mr. President, that appropriation ordinance number 2022-003 be approved under second reading, Mr. President.
Any second please, Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, Tanong Mabulok, Parangan. Remarks, observations, objections, please deliver your sponsorship speech.
Mr. President, as a gesture of support to the provincial governor, this representation would like to manifest that we are all in accord to support him in his quest or his intention to serve our constituents in the provincial government of Davao del Norte. Therefore, Mr. President, this representation would like to move that this chamber will now unanimously approve the proposal of the good governor certified as urgent, in order for him to know that this chamber is very much in support for his administration in so far as the general welfare is concerned. Thank you, Mr. President, I so move for its approval, Mr. President.
Any remarks, questions, observations, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading. Floor Leader, what is the pleasure of the Floor Leader?
Thank you, Mr. President. In order to accommodate the approval of this appropriation ordinance on third and final reading, I therefore move to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
There's a motion, any second, for, to suspend the rules to accommodate this, Honorable Aala, Amit, Lu. Remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion is hereby approved. May the Chair get the two-thirds votes for the suspension of the rules?
Mr. President, for the suspension of rules, Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimous, Mr. President.
Rules are now suspended. Honorable Amit, please pass the said measure on third and final reading.
Mr. President, let this action of the chamber now will now serve as a message that this council is very much willing to support the honorable governor in so far as his intention to serve our constituents and the provincial government. Therefore, Mr. President, in order to respect his certification that this measure is urgent, I now move that this measure be approved under third and final reading, Mr. President.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, appropriation ordinance number 2022-003 is approved on third and final reading under suspended rules. Floor Leader, please.
Mr. President, I move for the restoration of the rules.
Any second please, Honorable Aala. Remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, rules are now restored. SP Secretary.
Mr. President, resolutions under unassigned business. Item one, resolution number 552, series 2022, congratulating and commending Mr. Neil Joaquin Montebon Tebar for being the gold medalist in the 100-meter backstroke and silver medalist in the 100-meter breaststroke of the 2022 Finnish short course swim competition, national finals on August 2020, 2021, or 21, 2022.
Floor Leader.
For this measure, kindly recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, Board Member Silutan.
Honorable Silutan is recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Floor Leader. I move to dispense with the reading of resolution number 552, series of 2022.
Any second please, Honorable Aala. Remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Mr. President, I further move that the said resolution be approved on second reading.
Any second please, Honorable Parangan, Aala. Remarks, observations, objections, sponsorship speech first, before your inquiry, sponsorship speech?
Mr. President, the title, its intent, and the manifestation I made earlier will serve as my sponsorship speech.
Thank you. Floor Leader.
Please recognize Board Member Pamisaran, Mr. President.
Honorable Pamisaran is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presidento. Aside of giving a resolution to Mr. Neil Joaquin Montebon, may I ask the proponent, Mr. Chair, being the chairman on Committee on Youth and Sports, if we have an existing ordinance that will grant or give cash or any monetary awards and incentives, considering that this is a national competition, I believe there is a corresponding amount to a certain medal, like for gold, equivalent amount for silver for that matter, so any, if we have any ordinance, Mr. Chair, that we can release any incentives?
Okay.
Honorable Silutan.
As far as I can remember, I authored an ordinance giving incentives to our achievers for a national and international sports competition, even giving recognition to the achievers of board licensure examinations. I think it's numbered Provincial Ordinance Number Two, series of, number three, or two, series of 2022. Tama ba ko, Mr. Secretary? Yes, sir. I authored an ordinance, sir, of giving incentives to our canang achievers, national or international competitions.
So, my inquiry, Mr. Chair, I'm referring to cash or monetary award, so...
I mean, from the, from the province, sir?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir, naa, sir.
So, meaning, Mr. Neil Joaquin Montebon will receive a cash?
Yes, sir, based on the intent of my ordinance, and subject to the availability of funds.
I hope and pray, Mr. Chair, that we will grant monetary or cash incentives to Mr. Neil Joaquin Montebon, because he is bringing pride in honor of the Province of Davao del Norte, considering that this is a national competition.
And that's the very intent and purpose of my enacted ordinance.
Maybe we could assess, SP Secretary, and Honorable Silutan, to ask our budget officer if, if that said appropriation ordinance was budgeted during this year, and if not, we could talk it out.
Yes, sir.
Not just for this year, but for next year. Although, these are very, what do you call that, rare cases, that we, national, but it serves as motivation to our youth, further develop your skills.
Mr. President, please recognize Board Member Katalan.
Honorable Katalan is recognized by the Chair.
Mr. President, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, thank you. This is a matter of suggestion, Mr. President, if the proponent will, will agree, maybe, Mr. President, this, this resolution that we will be crafting, if, if you may allow, Mr. President, we will put, we will make a, a true, or a plaque out of, out of it, and then we will give it to, signed by, by the vice governor and maybe the members, and this will be given to Mr. Neil Joaquin Montebon, so that he can fully appreciate the resolution that we made, not just a piece of paper, but a piece of, we will put it in a plaque, Mr. President.
Mr. President, to, to respond to the manifestation of Board Member Katalan, it has been a practice of this honorable chamber to give a plaque, instead of papil, sa ato ang mga achievers dari sa atong province.
That is well noted, Honorable Katalan. Floor Leader.
Please recognize Board Member Aala, Mr. President.
Honorable Aala is recognized.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I could remember well during our time that I have crafted an ordinance, awarding cash and plaque, life-size. You know, dako. Awarding it personally here with honorary. I hope that we could revive that same ordinance.
Thank you, Honorable Aala. Let me task our SP Secretary to look into ordinances being mentioned by Honorable Aala and Honorable Silutan.
Well noted, Mr. President.
If there are other remarks or questions, observations, hearing none, there's a pending that this be approved on second reading, so I hereby approve this on second reading. Please pass this on third and final reading.
I so move, Mr. President.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution number 552, series of 2022, is approved on their net final reading.
Item two, resolution number 553, series 2022, granting omnibus authority to Honorable Edwin Ihubahib, Governor this province, to make, enter into, and sign instruments relative to the grant of financial assistance to the local government units or LGUs, with schools implementing special education or SPED program for and on behalf of the provincial government of Davao del Norte.
Floor Leader, please.
Mr. President, for this measure, kindly recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Laws, Resolution, and Ordinance, Board Member, Senior Board Member Katalan, Mr. President.
Honorable Katalan is recognized by the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you once again, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. A motion be passed to dispense the reading of resolution number 553, series of 2022. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second please, Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, Tanong Mabulok. Remarks, observations, objections, motion presented is hereby approved.
Another motion, Mr. President, is for the approval of resolution number 553 for second reading. I so move, Mr. President.
Any second please, Honorable Aala, Pamisaran, Tanong Mabulok. Remarks, observations, objections?
Please recognize Board Member Amit, Mr. President.
Let us first task the proponent to give a sponsorship speech before the remarks.
Remarks? Mr. President, I want to deliver my remarks before the final...
Ah, okay, okay, Honorable Amit.
Mr. President, as you can observe today's session, Mr. President, there are two items being requested by the good governor, that it will be done by this council through his certification, as it is an urgent mission, Mr. President. The first mission was delivered by yours truly, being a member of the Hupung ng Pagbabago, which dominates this chamber. And today's session, Mr. President, no less than the son of the opponent of the good governor, the honorable senior board member Roy Cat, Roy... Oh, oh. Lop, Lopun. Mr. On the honorable senior board member, Katalan, Mr. President, he, he is now about to deliver his sponsorship speech, Mr. President, in support of this mission, Mr. President. So today, Mr. President, I do hope that the good governor will receive this message that politics was already forgotten, Mr. President, and we are all in one to support him, Mr. President, in this mission. I am very much excited to listen to the sponsorship speech of the son of my good friend, Roy Katalan, Mr. President.
Thank you for that statement, Honorable Amit. Honorable Katalan, please proceed to your sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Ah, the, the board member, Honorable Orlie Amit. Mr. President, let it be said that this measure, Mr. President, will manifest the commitment of the Sangguyang Panlalawigan, headed by Vice Governor Ricardo Oyuui, to its commitment in helping our children or learners with special needs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further remarks? Observations, amendments, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading. Kindly pass this on third and final reading.
For third and final reading, Mr. President, I so move, Mr. President.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution number 553, series of 2022, is approved on third and final reading.
Item three, resolution number 554, series 2022, suspending temporarily resolution number 409, series 2022, entitled "Adapting the New Set of Internal Rules and Procedure of the Sangguyang Panlalawigan of Davao del Norte for Term 2022 to 2025, Particularly Rule 5, Section 1 thereof, by changing the time of the 11th regular session from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., which shall be conducted on Monday, September 12, 2022, due to reason herein stated."
Floor Leader, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. As chairperson of the Committee on Rules and Privilege, I move to dispense the reading of resolution number 554.
Any second please, Honorable Aala. Remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
I move that resolution number 554 be approved on second reading.
Any second please, Honorable Aala. Remarks, observations, objections, please deliver your sponsorship speech.
The title, Mr. President, serves as my sponsorship speech.
Any further remarks? Objections, observations, amendments, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved on second reading. Please pass this on third and final reading.
I move that resolution number 554 be approved on third and final reading.
Those who are in favor, please raise your right hand.
In favor, Mr. President, are Honorable Aala, Honorable Mabulok, Honorable Lu, Honorable Katalan, Honorable Rimitar, Honorable Parangan, Honorable Pamisaran, Honorable Amit, Honorable Silutan, Honorable So. Ten members are unanimously in favor, Mr. President.
Therefore, resolution number 554, series of 2022, is approved on third and final reading. Floor Leader, please.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance number 2022-003, as well as resolution numbers 552, 553, and 554, all series of 2022, be extracted from the records to expedite the approval of these pieces of legislation. I so move.
Any second please, Honorable Pamisaran, Aala, Rimitar. Remarks, observations, objections, hearing none, motion presented is hereby approved.
Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, business for third and final reading, none. Mr. President, Mr. Floor Leader, announcements.
Announcement, Mr. President, from the chairman, from the chairperson of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, Board Member Amit, and from the chairperson also of the good government public ethics and agrarian reform, that there would be a committee meeting on Wednesday, 9:00 a.m., September 7, at SP Session Hall.
For announcement, Kwasi Judicial Hearing on September 6, 2022, 9:00 a.m., here sa Session Hall. As agreed, long-sleeved Filipino barong for men and Filipiniana casual.
Or business suit.
Or business suit. There shall be word for gentlemen and ladies, 9:00 a.m.
No more announcement, Mr. President? Considering there's none, Mr. President, so I therefore move that the 10th regular session of our calendar year 2022 be adjourned.
Sorry, sorry, Floor Leader, before, our legislative agenda is moved, everyone... our legislative agenda is moved, everyone knows, um, from Sep... supposedly September eighth to ten, but we moved not to thirteen and fifteen because of the availability of the venue, but we are still on track, okay? So if there there's a pen... there's a motion, any second for the adjournment of the session, Honorable Aala, Amit, Lu, Tanong Mabulok. Motion for adjournment is hereby approved. The tenth regular session for calendar year two thousand, twenty, twenty-two, term of office twenty, twenty-two to twenty, twenty-five, is hereby adjourned.